Our meeting will now come to an end. Please join me in the pleasure of the meetings.
The citizens of the United States of America and as your republic, on which it stands, we are a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence for our men and women in the armed forces and for our police and firefighters who protect our community. Please be seated. This evening, trustee higher will administer the oath of office to police officer recruit James Donalds Jr. James, will you come up here?
Thank you, Mayor. Police recruit James Donalds Jr. was born in Howlett Beach, Queens, to Larissa and James Donalds who is here today. He also has an old assistant for him. He graduated from Bethan High School, went on to Plumville State College where he majored in criminal justice, law enforcement technology, security systems, and computer programming information systems. James was a police explorer for Nassau County Police Department for more than five years and began in the rank of captain and held the position of patrol team commander, which is a very high position in these wars. He is also quite prevalent in this city and has served as a trainer for young children and adults. We are looking forward to having James Donalds down in court.
Raise your hand if you have the name. I say your name.
I, James Donalds Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer with the Garden City Police Department.
The duties of a police officer with the Garden City Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
My powers vested in me as police commissioner of the Village of Garden City, I declare you...
All right, we're going to take a few photos. Commissioner, will you please come up and be in the picture? All right, James, if you have your mom and dad here or some members of your family, please come on. Trent, please stand so that we can hear you. Chief Francisco, will you have anything to say?
Trent will be graduating from the Garden City Public Service Department and a member of our unified ranks for that. We're spot on with the fiscal therapy meeting and will be pending on the Capitol on October 11th.
Now, do I have motion? Do I have motion to appoint Trent Biscone as a volunteer firefighter for the Village of Garden City?
I will. I'll second it.
That motion was unanimous. Okay.
Congratulations.
At this time, we return to comments on agenda items from the department and our village administrator. Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to talk about item number six. This, a topic of part-time seasonal service schedule that gives the Department flexibility to cover special events and vacations a little over time. Number eight, the done agreement between the Gozy Police Department and the United States Secret Service. This is through an agreement that was allowed by the Gozy Detective to be assigned to electronic crimes task force. The task force was created to assist the Secret Service in the event of a large-scale statewide critical infrastructure cyber attack that will likely affect the Gozy Police Department and the village government. The Gozy City Detective assigned to the task force has already received extensive training with Secret Service and Department of Electronic Device Analysis Collection, which has put vital on several high-profile cases, including overdose death for recent sexual adultery cases. This agreement will provide the Detective with additional resources to investigate these types of offenses. Overtime incurred by detectives and a member of the task force will be reimbursed as well as fuel and equipment costs. In addition, there will be additional cost savings in the village. The Department will no longer be required to pay $3,200 in yearly investigative application licensing fees.
Wow, that's a wonderful arrangement, isn't it?
Yes.
Very impressive.
And I believe he's the only one that has been through that extensive training with the Secret Service from this area. And now he's being included in this. It's a great honor for the village.
It is a great honor, yeah. Okay, Mr.?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything on the agenda tonight, but I mean, we'll have to answer the questions.
Okay, are there any questions? I don't think so. Chief Francisco?
I have a question. I'm sorry. People getting their holders for their...
We're still receiving requests. We're waiting to receive the rest of the boxes located here in the garage on site. Today, we've seen a couple of requests.
Does that mean, do we have the fourth?
Yes, we do.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing on the agenda. Just want to mention one thing, that the new light of travel through service, Sunday night , 17:00. And did several calls and everything's working well there.
Very good to hear. Mrs. Wu?
Yes, so tonight I have a couple of items on the agenda that need to be discussed a little bit. Item number two, the engagement of EKF O'Connor-Dakis to provide professional audit services for the village. As you know, we've used our prior auditor agency for quite some time, even through our deep process. And with the assistance of the finance committee and the choice, and our choices, and came to the selection of EKF O'Connor-Dakis. They are a very large firm. They do a lot of work on the land. And they're very qualified to, you know, look for audit services for the village of our size and capacity. We're very satisfied with this firm, so we're creating a fund agenda for the board to look at. And item number three, requesting the village to adopt a policy to add another bank or give authorized banks to us, and this is People's United Bank. In our ongoing efforts to maximize our investment in time, we have discussions with banks all the time. And this is one of the banks that has offered us payable interest rates on CDs. Therefore, we're requesting flexibility as a bank to be able to invest in this bank as well.
That shows good vision.
Thank you.
Yeah, to keep your eye on those interest rates.
One of the drives of our deputy mayor to help us, you know, go out and search and talk to the, be more proactive and talking to, you know, local things.
Very good. It's good to be on there. I think, I don't know, I'm psychic, but I think the interest rates are going up.
Mrs. Wu, one point, I know through the efforts of your government, by finding these additional opportunities, we significantly increase the income that we receive from money and our investments, which again, as a municipality, many people may not know, we are very restricted as far as where and what we can invest our money in. Can you give us a bullet point idea between last year, the last, you know, two years ago in a fiscal year and last fiscal year, what the difference in income was?
I don't have a, well, I had what we've received in investment income last fiscal year, but I do know that beginning in this, in January of this year, we received about $150,000 in interest income since January of this year, so six months.
Okay, thank you.
Six months. One other update, so the last couple of days, the finance department has been selling parking permits for a field seven N. The police commissioner has provided us with a list of village residents that showed interest in purchasing these permits, so we reached out to them. And in two days, we've sold 17 of the 35 permits, so, in two days, yes. So there was interest there.
Interesting fact.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items on the agenda tonight. Items number nine and 10, these are two maintenance agreements to help us support systems that we run. One is in a GIS system, which is the Engineering Department. And the second one is the SCANA system, which is the system we use to maintain our, the water department, controls of the water department. These are professional services agreements to help us support throughout the year in cases that issues arise or anything might happen with the service. But I, one item I'd really like to dive into a little more is item number 11, 1-4 dioxin removal for wells number 10 and 11. Over the past few years, I've spoken about, and I'm sure everybody's read about, the issues with emerging contaminants on Long Island and the water supply, more specifically 1-4 dioxin. This is not an item that's unique to Long Island, it's a nationwide issue. Obviously, some areas have more serious issues than others. Bethpage comes to mind when it comes to issues with water. But no matter how large or small these issues are, when it comes to drinking, every issue is important. The Garden City Water Department has taken many steps these last few years to ensure, all the time, but mostly in the last few years, we've stepped up to ensure that the water supply in this village remains safe and that we need to exceed all federal and state, federal, state, and local standards when it comes to water quality. We've made significant investments in infrastructure in the water department to ensure that this happens and that we are safe going forward. In addition to minimum standards, we have taken a proactive approach when it comes to these emerging contaminants, specifically 1-4 dioxin, which brings me back to the agenda item number 11. With state local agencies contemplating how to address this contaminant in the water, the Garden City Water Department, we've taken a measured approach and we've put an action plan together to help address this. One of the first things we did was form a committee made up of experts in the field with consultants or water consultants and legal advisors to put together an action plan on how we are going to address this. We hired experts in the field. If you recall, a few months ago, six months ago, we engaged with a firm, Langton Associates. Langton Associates are the leading experts in the country on 1-4 dioxin. In fact, one of their associates, Mr. Tom Moore, literally wrote the book, which is considered the bible, on 1-4 dioxin. This company is advising us in this field. Most recently, the village joined a lawsuit brought about by other water departments in the region to hold the companies accountable who manufactured products which led to the contamination of these emerging contaminants to appear in our water supply. And most recently, we have put a plan together, the most recent actions we've taken is putting a plan together to identify how to move forward with a treatment method. And that's what you see in front of you right now. We now have a, they're asking the board to request authorization for this project to, to, to establish a pilot program for wells 10 and 11, which is over on Clinton Road, to test a new treatment method that's being introduced to remove 1-4 dioxin from the water. This program has been tested in other areas on Long Island. I know Suffolk County has done it, our neighbors next door, Water Party West of Nassau, have also done a pilot program. This will be our first pilot program in this village. It's about, I believe it's going to be a 30-day program. We're working with the Department of Health, we're working with our H2M water consultants, and obviously, if the pilot program is successful, this will be the first step towards addressing the 1-4 dioxin issue throughout the village. If you recall recently, back on June 1st, we increased the water rates by 5%. If you look at the cost of this project, you can see why that was one of the reasons we took this step. This pilot program alone is going to cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 and is a very small scale pilot program. When the full blown program goes to effect per well or well site, the cost of this is going to be significant. But rest assured, the department is moving in this direction to secure a safe water supply for the village.
That's an excellent aggressive approach, and I really commend you for that.
Joe, could you explain a little more what they're going to do, how they're going to treat the water?
So there's a, one of the firms I mentioned before, Langton Associates, they have come up with a different method. The existing treatment methods we have in place right now do not remove 1-4 dioxin from the water. So they have developed a new method which involves UV light and peroxide to treat the water, which would remove the contaminant from the water, which then, since we're using peroxide to treat the water, then the peroxide then needs to be removed from the water. So then, there's another treatment method, which is called GAC or Granulated Activated Carbon Filters, to then remove the peroxide to, and then the health department requires us to add chlorine to the water and then the water is safe to drink.
Thank you. So it's a multi-step process?
No, they are, the state is contemplating, there is no, at this point in time, there actually is no level standard set by the state or the federal government. There is, it's really, it goes to the default standard. So what we, there is a, I believe a bill in the governor's desk which would set a very low standard. So we are addressing the wells that we have, and there's approximately six in the village that if the standard was set tomorrow, those wells would exceed that level. 10 and 11, yes, fall into that category, not the highest, but they fall into that category this week, yes.
Very good, very interesting. I think it's on a lot of people's minds, frankly.
Yes, yes.
An aggressive approach to it. Mr. Spurrier, village administrator?
Thank you for that rigorous explanation. I was a home people, there's 12, 13 residents, and I went through a similar explanation about quite much detail. Thank you, Joe. On this, on the recreation area, specifically the, so, pool, the pool goes into full schedule on Tuesday, June 25th, 10:00 until 9:00 p.m. Tuesday, 12:00 noon to 8:00 p.m. I'm sorry, Tuesday through Sunday, 12:00 noon to 8:00 p.m. on Monday. The summer playground program will be in all five minute daybreak parks on Monday, June 24th. The fully accessible playground park is nearing completion, should be open and available next week or so. The pool memberships are a little behind from last year. Well, that's a nice comparison, really, the comparison will be usually against the budget that we put in place for this year. The weather does not be cooperating with very cool in May, but we do have warm weather coming until April, because by July, I think, maybe we should have what I consider final numbers and we'll deal with any variances at that point.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, would any of the trustees care to comment on agenda items? Any questions or comments? Then we'll turn then to citizens' comments on agenda items. If you would like to come to the podium and ask a question, please let us know by raising your hand, and then you will have four minutes to speak.
On agenda items?
On agenda items only. Mrs. Stiller?
We have Stiller, Huntington Road. I'd like to talk also about item 11, and I'd like to commend the village for what they're doing. I think you're ahead of most people, and that's a source of comfort. Today's Long Island Herald, they, every politician in Long Island and their brother was talking about the importance of getting a standard for 1-4 dioxin. So there were at least four congressmen, Ed Rock, Laura Gillen, Don Clavon, and everybody was talking about that. So I'm glad that our village seems to be ahead of the room. So thank you for that. I have one concern, I don't know if it's accurate. In that same article, today's Long Island Herald, where they mentioned all the politicians expressing concern about 1-4 dioxin, they said that the EPA, the feds, recommend .35, .35 parts per billion for dioxin, it'd be no bigger than that. Our drinking water report says 35 parts per billion. So I'm wondering if in our July meeting, you could give us an update, is the Long Island Herald wrong, or what's going on? Thank you.
It's a recommended level by the EPA, it's not law. And if there's no set standard that's included in this agreement to law by either the feds or the state, there's a default. That's the 35 parts per billion that you stated is a default level. If there is no established standard by any regulatory agency, the default is a very high level.
Okay, so then the Long Island Herald is wrong, and they say that the recommendation is .35 parts per billion?
I don't, I can't confirm or deny that, but it's not, it could be a recommendation, but it's not.
It says it's a recommendation, but this says it's also, our water report says it's a recommendation. One of them is wrong. Again, do you think by the July meeting, you could let us know whether the Long Island Herald has it wrong, or H2M has it wrong?
Joe, do we know on record to have a state regulation, like, when state guidelines is going to be yet?
I think that, I think we're all asking the same thing. We've been here, we've been here since last year, that it's the governor, we're waiting for the governor to establish a level, but, you know, it's down June, nothing's happened yet, so we're preparing for it, basically.
By the way, just to comment on this, just to let everybody understand, is that when someone brings out .35 and their water says 35, it sounds like a tremendous number. The reality of it is, is that if you go across, many states, as Joe will tell you, has set up their own numbers. Some come up at .35, some come up at 40, some come up at 77. So the bottom line is, is that each of the states have come across, and when you deal with this particular item, this 1-4 dioxin, the bottom line is that each state's numbers literally run the gamut, as far as what they, what they have determined is a safe level. So again, for us, that's one of the reasons why when we went out and we hired these people, we hired the people that are considered to be the experts and the best at what they do, so that this way, when we put it together, when we put out our filters and everything else with the water in the village, it will be the best level that we can. But again, just understand that the numbers that are set across the country run the gamut.
Joe, is there any restrictions on the companies from using 1-4 dioxin yet? They're just, it's still open season on using it.
I don't think it's an actual product, it's a byproduct.
No, it's in everything.
Yeah.
Read the list.
It's in shampoo.
It warms cells, the doorbell.
It's in everything.
Okay. Joe, I have a question on item 16. Item 16, we have received some concerns and inquiries from residents along the railroad tracks through the village, because apparently the railroad, the third track builders have started staking out property lines along the tracks, along people's homes. So the village has taken, we're going to be taking action to do our own meets and bounds survey, survey along the entire length of the tracks, the way the work is being done. I have initially reached out to two or three engineering companies to do the work, unfortunately, every one of them has come back conflicted because they're already doing some work for the third track company. So I'm working on my fourth firm now to try to get, engage a, an engineering firm to do this work. But that's what this item is, to engage a firm to do a meets and bounds, a boundary survey along the railroad tracks for the length of the third track project, to establish where a railroad property is and where a village property is. And, yes, I'm sorry, yes, private property.
You know, I think that was a very good move, because there was a lot of acts, and I, among the people, there are, we were chatting, and they, you know, had sort of mindset that they could not possibly be treated fairly and so forth, and so this came right at the right time, to bring in the consultants and to spend this money for the community fund money.
Well, that's, yes, I'm gonna, after I get the final proposal, I'm going to present that to the community fund for Long Island Railroad, and we assume we're going to reimburse for it, because that's what the fund is set up for, for one like this.
I think it was a really good idea. It's been very, very tense up there, and we, this will help out a lot of things.
It's not just a agreement here, we're living, we go from the White Park Road to, I guess, the high school, basically.
So this, in essence, is protecting all residents?
Exactly, yes.
I just have a question. Is number 15 part of the consent calendar, or is that separate? I just, I didn't see it delineated.
Yes, sir. I thought 15 would be a part of the consent calendar.
Okay, so before we would approve the consent calendar, Joe, could you, or you or Ralph, what I'm explaining, reemphasize what we're doing at the end?
The company that we have engaged to act as the construction manager, CNY, is also tasked with preparing a temporary protection plan, which will include a need for a number of things. Initially, there will be a requirement for a fence around the property and a number of other things. Because of the sensitivity of this particular project and the desire that everybody be on board to see what's going on, this is an authorization to prepare specifications for any of those projects that will require public bidding. By way of illustration only, the fencing project was a project which would likely exceed the $35,000 threshold for competitive bidding, and comes to this point with an award. But in addition to an award, this resolution is blanket authorization to prepare bid specifications for any other similar project. For many projects, you do not require this type of an authorization, but this generically allows staff to put together those bid specs in anticipation of competitive bidding and still retains for this board the right to ultimately award the bid on any given project.
Citizens' comments on agenda items? Please come up.
Maury Delacuna, Maury Delacuna, 105, New White Park Road. Thank you for that explanation on number 15. I did want to ask on that specific item, if a, this little work will be available to the public, depending on what... to the public, if the, if the scope of work will be available to the public that you're preparing, and how we're going to access that?
Yes. Once bid specifications are prepared for a given project, they become a public document which is available under the Freedom of Information law. So what this does, in fact, is alert the public to that very point, which is that project by project, bid specs will be required for any individual project exceeding thirty-five thousand dollars, and if the public wish to examine those bid specs, they could do so.
Thank you, thank you. And could I just also ask on number twelve, how quickly, we hope that the fencing will be brought into place in order to be more convenient in preparation for stabilization?
Provided this item is approved this evening by the board, there's about a three to four weekly time for testing it.
And also, I did want to, Maury, Captain, the folks in the west who are in Greenridge, I did want to thank you for speaking to them and trying to address their concerns with regards to their property lines in the railroad right away, that I've been very much concerned with at the moment, and all the months they have been seeking some kind of solution.
Maury, just to let you know, when we had our last WPO meeting, one of the things that trustee McCrinos and I mentioned, is that whatever concerns that we have, please let us know. And what happened was, is that we actually received an email from a couple of residents on Greenridge, that this was something that they had. So what we did was, we then reached out to Joe and to Ralph, and the bottom line is, we determined that the best thing to do was not, yes, or estimate, or for us to actually hire a firm, or approve, so that this way they will know exactly where the, you know, backdoor actually does go, or what property, so we made sure that if something is done, we've done something in a cooperative way. So that was actually a result of the meeting that we had, of course, with the residents.
Yes, and if you recall at that meeting, Bob and I, you know, I was there also, and the residents did express their specific concern about the property.
Right, right, so that's why we wanted to address it right away.
So I'm glad to see you.
Any further citizens' comments on agenda items? I could be really wrong. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of June sixth, twenty nineteen? Trustee McCrinos, second. Trustee Delaney, all in favor? Aye. That motion passed unanimously. Do I have a motion to approve a consent calendar? Do approve the consent calendar? Trustee Delaney, a second. Trustee Foley, all of us in favor? Aye. That motion passed unanimously. Oh, was there, was there a, that's right. Okay, Brian is not with us, so that was seven zero, right? Okay. Members of the board, there are three items I would like to deal with this evening that are not on the agenda. If the board consents unanimously, I would like to suspend the rules and add a personal matter involving police officer Padone, a contract with, and also a contract with a account accounting firm to audit our deferred compensation plan and a transfer of funds. Is there any objection to suspending the rules to add the personnel matter with police officer Padone? Counsel, would you please explain the personnel item?
Thank you, Mayor. Many of you know police officer Padone, who has been with the village for many, many years. What may not be widely known is that prior to entering village police service, he was also employed in public service in a civilian capacity, and in that capacity was enrolled in the civilian state employment retirement system. Once he became a police officer in Garden City, he joined the police and fire retirement system. He is now prepared to retire. He has been advised by the state retirement system that because of his particular background and him being what is called a tier-two, he will do better by retiring under the civilian system than under the police system, a reversal of what you would typically expect. But in order to accommodate the recommendation that he retire under the civilian retirement system, he would need to first resign as a police officer, then take employment with the village for a period of a minimum of three days in a civilian capacity, and then retire as a civilian from village service. This resolution would authorize him to do that without losing any of the post-separation benefits that would otherwise be available under the PBA contract. There is no cost, no additional cost for the village in doing this, in fact, there is, in fact, a savings, because he will be retiring a year earlier than he otherwise would be required to retire, and can either not be replaced or be replaced by a police officer at a considerably lower salary. So this is simply a device under which he would be permitted to retire under the civilian retirement system rather than the police retirement system. Any questions on that?
Based on, based on the explanation of counsel, does a trustee wish to move this item? Trustee higher, and a second. Trustee Delaney.
Copy, the full resolution is before you.
All in favor? Aye. Passed seven zero. Do you need access of trustee Delaney?
Yeah.
Is there any objection to suspending the rules to add the contract with the accounting Counsel, would you please explain the accounting firm item?
Certainly, Mayor. The village retains a CPA firm for at least two different specific audits, one for the village as a whole, which was the audit that you just passed on the regular agenda, but there is also a separate audit of the deferred compensation plan. After a number of years with the ABZ ordinance, as was explained by our treasurer, this board has now gone with a new firm called PKF. Proposed engagement letters for both audits were referred to my firm for review. The engagement letter for the village generally was fine and was just passed by this board. The engagement letter for the deferred compensation board required additional negotiation. There are very specific rules under the state's requirements for deferred compensation boards, and there was some discussion back and forth between PKF and my office as to the precise wording that would be required for an engagement letter. We resolved that yesterday, literally, and a final engagement letter has been submitted to the village, which appears to my office to be in all respects in compliance with state regulation requirements. So inasmuch as the treasurer was hoping that the audit of the deferred comp board could start rapidly, we were requesting that this board add it as an agenda item by suspension of the rules. It is otherwise customary for this type of audit to take place.
Based on the explanation of counsel, does a trustee wish to move the item? Deputy mayor, voter, second. Trustee, no. All in favor? Seven zero. Now we have a third issue.
Yes, Mayor. Again, I would ask if there's no objection on the part of the board. If the board unanimously consents to suspend the rules, we would also like to add a transfer of funds. The board will recall that this evening it passed an item, I believe in connection with item two, for, oh, sorry, sixteen, item sixteen, for long-term survey, but the costs for that have to be moved from one account to another in order to pay for it properly. And I understand that it is coming out of a contingency fund, referred to treasurer for the accounting to which it is going.
Is there any objection? You're suspending the rules.
No objection.
Okay, very good. Based on the explanation?
Mayor, do you want to have this?
Oh, would you mind just saying, yes?
The transfer will be coming, the thirty thousand dollar transfer will be coming from the contingency funds and will enter to ZTW department under the Engineering Contractual Services line.
And we do expect to get that back.
Correct, well, to get the reimbursement that will.
So you just have to move that initial for the funds.
Be punished.
Based on the explanation, counsel, does a trustee wish to move the item? Trustee, trustee McCrinos, and a second. Trustee higher, and all of us in favor, please. And so that would be seven zero. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the business portion of tonight's meeting. At this time, we will hear from the citizens on any matter that was not on the agenda. Please raise your hands to draw my attention. Please, please come forward. You will have four minutes to speak, and please give your name and address.
Good evening, morning trustees. My name is Teresa McCallum, and I reside at one seven five Hillburn Road. I am speaking with you this evening as a resident and parent of children attending the Cathedral Nursery School. As you know, the Cathedral Nursery School is a not-for-profit nursery school which offers educational programs for our children ages two through three K. The purpose of my comment is not to debate the long-term usage of the land that the nursery school now sits, but rather to discuss a one-year extension to their lease. It is my understanding that the school is actively searching for a new location, having already looked at over twenty-five sites. Seeing as the ongoing search for a new location is still in process, and that the projects at St. Paul's will now be beginning a little bit later than originally thought, the school approached the board of trustees requesting the consideration of a one-year extension to their lease. This would allow the school the time necessary to perform renovations to the new site. It is my understanding that the property at St. Paul's will not be slated for renovation or improvement for quite a few years. However, despite the one-year extension request, the Cathedral Nursery School is still being vacated in June of twenty nineteen. Could you please explain why the request for a one-year extension is not being considered? I would like to educate myself on the factors bearing on this decision being made by the village. Could you please also explain why the nursery school is being prohibited from requesting use of any village land? As a parent who extensively searched for quality nursery and pre-K program in town, I am saddened to think that our children will be losing access to this crucially important early education program. The Cathedral Nursery School has become a second home for our children. As many of you and children may remember, the transition to nursery school is not always an easy one. I consider myself so fortunate to have found a place that not only my children love, but loves my children back. The idea of having to disrupt my child's education and routine in order to transition them to a new school is both heartbreaking and daunting to me. Furthermore, it is difficult to digest that the village would prefer the land to sit vacant than be used by a not-for-profit entity to educate our youngest minds. As an educator, I am disheartened to know that the village is stripping away a program that is so fundamental to each young learner's success in their educational career. There are over one hundred and eighty students in the school who also reside in Garden City. Additionally, there are approximately one hundred pre-K students currently at the Cathedral. As you know, the Garden City Public School does not operate universal pre-K option, and the other schools in the area do not have the capacity to absorb all of the children's needs. This will inevitably leave some of our families in a very difficult situation, being without a pre-K program for their child. It will have a simple-down effect on our public school system, as children will be arriving at kindergarten less prepared, and those of our children facing challenges will lose precious time for early intervention. As a school administrator who handles financial and facilities matters for a local school district, I am unable to discern with the information I currently have how this would be a beneficial decision for the village. My job tasks me with keeping up pulse on the financial needs and struggles of our community. However, at no time is the educational success of our children leveraged for our financial success. As a village resident, I am saddened to know that we will be employing twenty-one of our residents years earlier than necessary. I would greatly appreciate if you could take the time to provide some clarity on your decision-making process and to further consider the one-year renewal extension. By granting the extension, you would be keeping a high-quality early education program in our community as well as helping your own residents. Before its untimely passing, I was fortunate enough to work with one former mentor of our city resident, Mr. Patrick Manley. In our capacity as school district administrators, we are often also faced with very complex decisions facing with this dealing with my stakeholders. In every single decision that we made, we would ask each other, are we doing what's best for our kids? And I implore you tonight, our village trustees, to ask yourselves if you're doing what's best for our kids. Thank you very much for your time.
If I could comment, first of all, I wanted to say that I have had the opportunity to go to the school. I got an opportunity to meet people. Over the last several weeks, I've received many of the letters that you people have sent us, emails. And one of the things that I found is that many people said that they hoped that they could come tonight to have a discussion. I think that's good. I think the other thing about it was, is that, and again, I basically go on all the Facebook sites and sites, and I read a lot of the comments, and there was a lot of comments there, and I really think that people are asking so many questions because they don't understand the facts. They don't understand how we got to this point. So I figure before everyone gets up there and probably says the exact same thing that was said here, maybe we should understand some of the facts. So what happened was, the school, and again, they're not a charity, they're a school, whether they're a profit or nonprofit, it's not the point of their business. But what happened was, they came to this village on May first of two thousand and three, and they said to us, listen, we're in a situation, we need a temporary location, and the bottom line is, the village worked with them, and basically set it up in the cottages. And what happened was, they then had to make a business decision. Am I gonna sit there, am I gonna look for another location? And again, this is my assumption. Or do we sit here and simply develop the cottages and places that we have here, assuming that the condition for the usage of the land is saying, well, it's not gonna change, it 's never changed? You have a huge building there, two hundred thousand square feet, okay? Trustees are gonna sit there, and we all know that for twenty-six years, nothing has happened. Well, that is changing now. So what happened was, for fifteen years, this village gave them a one-year renewal. Every single year, we gave them renewal. Now again, they made that decision to develop that rather than for fifteen years to find another location. Now, of course, we could sit there and debate why that was done, or why they didn't move, or whatever it was, and we could sit there and we can debate that back and forth. But what happened was, is that as you saw by the agenda, this board, finally, in the last couple of years, has decided that we need to address what's happening with St. Paul's. The reality of it is, if any of you came to our presentations last July, what happened was, the architects and the engineers said, the very first thing you need to do with St. Paul's is protect what you have, stabilize it. So one of the things that we're gonna be doing is that we're gonna be erecting fences around St. Paul's going back to the cottages. In addition to that, we're then gonna be bringing in construction crews that will then be looking to stabilize St. Paul's. So we knew this was coming up a year ahead of time. So what happened was, we went to the school, and when they wanted to have a one-year extension, we knew that this was coming up. So what happened was, the school came to us and said, look, and if anyone who's familiar with the school knows, they run a two-year program. So what they did was, they said, look, we would appreciate you would do is give us a two-year real, not a one-year, a two-year. So that this way, we could then set in motion, find a new location, and then anyone who starts last year would be able to finish next year. Now again, I think, if you listen to it, if you're reasonable, you'd say, okay, that's a reasonable request. What's out here and thought about it, because what's the concern? The concern is, is that we are now addressing a two-hundred-thousand-square-foot building that we are looking to stabilize, and so this way, at some point, we can determine the village, what are we gonna do with it? As I said, you're gonna have construction coming in, you're gonna have trucks, you're gonna have all these things that are coming in, and we would not want to have a school with your own children there. So the bottom line is, the conditions for, right, the conditions and the needs on St. Paul's has changed. And again, just to talk about St. Paul's for a second, why are we doing that? The reality of it is, I'm sure everybody remembers, we used to have Ellis Falls next to St. Paul's. Ellis Falls was taken down. But what did they do to Ellis Falls before they tore it down? They had to go in, and they had to abate, they had to remove all of the toxins that were in it, whether it's lead paint, asbestos, all those things, and then it was finally taken down. Well, now, what happens is, when we're gonna go to stabilize and stop the deterioration in St. Paul's, we have to now deal with the toxins in that building. We now have to sit there and abate everything that's inside, because down the road, whether or not you tear the building down, or you leave it alone, or whether or not you develop or you leave it alone, or whether or not you develop, whatever ends up happening with building, you have to deal with what's inside. Okay? So that's where we get to when we make the contract. Now, is this a copy of the contract? I'm not going to make something up, I'm going to read right from it. And this says, "The parties acknowledge that this second amendment and restated license agreement to be the last extension and/or renewal of the premises, and that notwithstanding any other provision of this agreement, the execution of this agreement also constitute due and proper notice to the licensee of the termination of the lease on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty." I'll drop that off. And here's the part that's interesting. "The licensee further agrees that it will not seek any further extensions for any new or similar license for the current site or for any other village-owned facilities." "Licensing hereby agrees that neither it nor its officers, teachers, or directors shall publicly express objection to the termination of this lease agreement, including, without limitation, publications of letters or press releases or advertising objecting to the village's determination to terminate the lease agreement, and shall not disparage or criticize village officials in connection therein." And I'm going to read the rest of the lease. The bottom line is this, I'm just trying to ask you to think about this from a common sense point of view. School comes to us, they say, please give us a two-year lease, please give it to us so that we can complete our next cycle of program, and we say, fine. We say, we have construction that's coming here, and we cannot, the demands on the St. Paul's and this property has changed from when you came here and me giving you a renewal lease for fifteen years. So when you come to us and you say, okay, please give us a two-year extension, but if you do that, we won't come for another lease, we won't sit there and badge you, we won't sit there and change the rules, and we're not going to come for a new agreement or anything else like that. So again, I respect every single one of you, I don't care if every single one of you comes up here in four minutes, but if you ask me, what is the truth, how we got here today, those are the facts. I'm not making this up. These are the facts. And again, I just wanted you to know that before we're going to do it.
I like the idea that what Trustee Walbrook said, one of the things that, in two thousand and four, that property became park and recreational land. On the New York State law, and this is not the village's law, this is New York State law, a private entity cannot operate in a public park for non-park purposes. This was brought out, in two thousand and two, the nursery school came and came to the village and asked for some land in two to three years. In two thousand and four, when that land became park land, it was pointed out by both the resident and trustees. The residents came to the trustees at that time and questioned the fact that the nursery school was operating on park land. I guess the trustees throughout the years have kind of looked the other way. And there's always has been conversations, the four and a half years I've been on as a trustee, I think we renewed it in two thousand and eighteen, as Trustee Walbrook said, June of two thousand and twenty. My recollection is that I also voted, I believe, in two thousand and sixteen for the one-year lease, et cetera. And it's always been pointed out to the nursery school and the nursery school faculty and the nursery school directors that there was some concerns, big concerns, about having a private enterprise on park land. It got to the point when the nursery school came to us in two thousand and eighteen, that again, caught up, a number of trustees and some residents were concerned about renewing the lease for the nursery school. The trustees at that time and the legal committee at that time asked village council in two thousand and eighteen to take a closer look at this. And village council had reported back to us at the time of the two thousand and eighteen lease that there is very big concern about private enterprise being on park land. That is the reason why, in addition to the St. Paul's, as Trustee Walbrook points out, that is the reason why in the licensing agreement that was signed in two thousand and eighteen, that language is in there. So it was made clear to the nursery school at that time that the lease for the license would not be renewed. It's all, it's part of exactly what Trustee Walbrook is talking about. It had to come to an end, and we were concerned, and we talked over it in years, and then we pointed out to the nursery school that we thought it should not be on park land. We were concerned enough in two thousand and eighteen, when the nursery school came to the board and asked for a two-year lease, we got a opinion of council, that it should not be there. It's unfortunate. And whether we tear down St. Paul's, or we don't tear down St. Paul's, or we build St. Paul's, or we don't build St. Paul's, unfortunately, unfortunately, the nursery school cannot remain on that property. Any complaints?
Yes.
Katie Southern, I'm at twenty-five percent. Thank you so much for that explanation. I think that was helpful for some of us who are aware of the facts and some of us who aren't. But I guess we're also looking for some help in another way. If you can help us figure out where one hundred and eighty to two hundred kids should go to nursery school over pre-K in two thousand and twenty and forward, that would be helpful. I'm not sure if the board is aware. There is one small co-op nursery school in the village, there's a few small preschools that are part of churches. These are already filled to capacity. So where will two hundred, three, four, and five-year-olds go to school?
So if you want to, I can try to help you answer. Again, I'm not trying to be adversarial at all. I appreciate everyone that came out. My kids went there, I afford them, they all like. I'm a little surprised that they didn't find an alternative site. I haven't been on the board a long time, but we've always been cool about approving it, saying, okay. And the last turn, we got pretty definitive information from the legal counsel that this was not a legal setup. Having a private enterprise, like, you know, if you want to open a pizza place on Broad, you know, we would go like, that's kind of not allowed. You know what I mean?
Pizza in a pizza place?
I know that they're seeing it as a school, but it's a private enterprise, and legally, they said, this is not okay. So we said, hey, we'll give you that two-year lease so you can go find another spot. Like, no one here is trying to throw the kids out, let's be honest, right? This has been a horizon we've seen coming, right? So we're trying to tell you that, okay, it's very difficult to be in this position sitting here. Legal counsel says this is not legal. And then what are we supposed to do? Like, what would you, if you were me?
We found loopholes, areas that were for fifteen years. You can probably work together. This seems a little too, kind of a comfortable discussion.
When they first moved, it wasn't parkland. It became parkland over time. Well, I'm really curious, what's ridiculous about what I just said?
No, no, nothing ridiculous. I guess we're just wondering.
Yeah, because there was like a whole courtroom murmur, because you did, it became parkland.
Should we all, should we all, your schools in Mineola, in my car?
You're coming to us, and I don't have, I'm a mother, I have four children. I've had to look for nursery schools. I'm basically a grandmother. My children will have to go through that process. I have a background in school board. There are approximately ten nursery schools in town. They're not all filled to capacity. But I understand your concern, and none of us up here wants to harm a child. So that notion is offensive to me. But here's the thing, what did your school do to plan for your children's education? And it can't be, come to the, and expect benevolent action on the part of a board will be just explained to the school for multiple years why they needed to have a forward plan. So we appreciate your coming, but all of you might be better served by meeting with your school administration to attempt to form a plan that will help your school. There are locations around town. We received a letter from them listing about fifteen locations, and if it's too expensive, then need to formulate a plan of how you're going to get there. Respectfully, that's not the village of Garden City's job to do. The job to educate your children in a private school falls to the management and all of you in how that's going to be done. So it seems like you have a lot of people here, who have a lot of energy, a lot of ideas and resources. I would have a meeting with the school and figure out what your next step is for your child. But expecting donations and benevolent action to continue when it was just explained by these two trustees why it's going to end, and having a school management that ignored all recommendations for years is a question I would be asking if my child was in that school.
And by the way, I'm not that sensitive to this. I don't need to talk again. But again, exactly what these two trustees just said. You know, I understand the point where everyone sits here and says, what is the village's trustees? The village's trustees is throwing the kids out. Okay. We sat, I have been a trustee for six years. I think I'll probably be the longest serving trustee, but Brian is not here. For six years, I know that we sat down with them and said, listen, this is a temporary situation that cannot go on. So that discussion went on with that school for seventeen years. So in two thousand and twenty, that means they were aware of this for seventeen years. So just trying to be fair to us and sit there and say, wait a minute, hold on, guys, we're running the school. If these guys were telling you for seventeen years, there's going to come a point where this is going to end, when something's going to be developed in St. Paul's, now that's coming. And now, people are coming out there, and believe me, like I said, I read all the Facebook pages, and they're like, you know, toasted us. And I'm sitting here saying, wait a minute. If people who went to school decided that, well, you know what we're going to do? We're going to offer, and I love this now, now we're going to offer new programs, and they're going to be on the weekend. Okay, well, my first question is, that's nice. You didn't even tell us that this is what you were thinking about doing. More importantly, what about anybody driving by St. Paul's on the weekend? You ever notice how many events are going on, how many cars? All of a sudden, now, now you're going to have programs on the weekends? So what I'm just saying to you is that it's not fair to us as a board when you sit there and say, if you guys don't do something, you're throwing the kids out in the street. What I want to say to you, just from the bottom of my heart, what have they done for seventeen years? They made a business decision. And the business decision that they made was, we're going to develop here instead of finding another location. And there's a lot of reasons why that went down. But I'm just trying to tell you that, okay?
Can I just make two points that would apply to your roles as board trustees?
Sure.
So if, let's just say, we all find new preschools to go to, I think they're close to capacity, and there's no way they can hold one hundred and eighty, two hundred kids. But say we all find neighboring schools in, you know, my car, Franklin Square, all over Mineola. I do think that the Garden City school system will suffer. It might not be right away, it might take one, two, three, five years. But you don't have a central preschool being kindergarten like you do now. And Cathedral Nursery School works closely with the primary schools to align curriculum, make sure the kids are prepared for kindergarten. We just won't have that. So I do think that is.
Wait, I want to address that. I was board president for six years, I was on that school board for twelve. The Garden City school system meets with over twenty different schools in the area.
Twenty-three nursery schools.
Twenty different nursery schools in the area, not just the ones in Garden City, where there's an invitation set out, and I believe they still continue to practice. And I think the school board would take offense to you saying that it would suffer because of this situation. Again, I come back to you, you're all responsible parents, you're going to find a spot for your child. Hopefully, it's a future with this school. Again, you all are here, but this school needs to find a new pool. And they've known about it for a very long time. And it's not just a business decision, they made a decision with your children. And instead of coming to the people who don't control the school, which is what you're doing here tonight, you need to talk to your school to figure out what your next step is. Because if, let's just go with the plan that the nursery school continued, let's just say that happens. This is a public place. Every other thing, you heard a list of items on the agenda, seventeen items that are going out for public bid. What makes you think that we're just awarding it to you? What if we bid it out? You might not win it. We're in a public organization. You are in a school. There is nothing you do that isn't bid it out, right, or on state contract. But this is not being bid out. This was done out of the goodness of heart seventeen years ago. And it's here now in a difficult spot because no action was taken by the management of that school.
This is not an easy thing for any of us to do, okay? I mean, our hands are kind of tied. It's park land, you cannot operate a private enterprise in a park land. And we have all the construction coming, so it's not an easy thing. I've visited the school, I like the school, I enjoy being there, I like seeing the kids. I think it's a wonderful program. I think it should continue, but it needs to be on some grounds, another building, let that continue with our school. And try. Where it is, it's not a good place for it to be.
Want to just to finish my second point, and then I'll leave. I just, another thing that might be, you know, applied to this setting, it's not against the board trustees, is so there will be a shortage of preschools in town. I think we can all agree about that. April's not able to find a new location in the middle of Garden City. And I think that could, along with things, things, a few years from now, change the dynamic of the town a little bit. Word gets out, Garden City has a shortage of preschools. Young families that value education, yes, we would love to have a Garden City. Forget Garden City, let's go.
This is part of, pre-kindergarten is part of education. Or a suggestion might be to approach the school board and develop a pre-K program. That would be wonderful. This is the village. The school has lots of, this is where we're supposed to communicate. You go to the school board if you're talking about a school issue.
I think it's important, again, to clarify, like, no one's against the school. No one's sitting here like sharpening knives, kicking, I don't see that. We're in a very tough position because it's clearly illegal. And we tried to make every accommodation to give them enough runway to find another place. I'm honestly shocked that they didn't. And I don't like to hear that it's closed.
Two years.
Yeah, well, I mean, with this latest extension, we even did do just the one, we did it two. Said, you're cool, you're secure, run your two-year cycle, just find another place to be. And there was, you know, there wasn't any movement.
As Trustee Walbrook pointed out, I've been on the board for years. Pointed out, every extension that we had.
No, I'm sure too, this is what I suppose, which he probably would have. I think there's another comment, to be honest.
Hi. Okay, sure.
It's for the microphone, for Melody.
Hi, my name is Nanette Stapanian, and I live on Popper Street. And I do, I have a question concerning a point that you made, sir, that the Cathedral Nursery School is not allowed anywhere in town. Is that true? Oh, I thought you said in the village.
That was the agreement that they signed.
That was the agreement that they signed.
And in the agreement, they said they wouldn't look in the village for some reason. I don't know why.
Village property. Why, why, why is that so, sir?
Village property.
Village property.
Village property, not village.
And again, I don't know why they put that in, but they said that they wouldn't look for another space that was owned by the village.
They weren't expecting the village to give them another location in village property.
Right, right.
So in other words, it would be okay to be in town as long as it's not on any of the other.
Look forward to it.
Yeah. Thousand percent. You know, it's just the details that they had put in.
You know what I would do, I sit toward the youngest, that's going to be funny. I think that it's time to look for tomorrow. It's time to accept the fact that the Garden City Nursery School, that we love so dearly and so dearly, is not going to be a possibility in your lives anymore. So why don't you, you're beyond, you're drawing, excuse me, this is general, I'm speaking, okay? All right, well, that's, I'm sorry. This is what I'd like to say. I'd like to say something encouraging. You all look very, very great, you're very, very eager, and I think that you can find a solution. The suggestion by Trustee Foley to go over and speak to these schools, the Garden City schools. Go and speak to churches in town. Sometimes they have a lot of room and yards in the back, and things can be done. Believe in yourself, that you can go forward and you can find something for your children equally far, because I know that you can.
Can I, I know you have... Hi, my name is Juliette Paradine Applevito. I reside at 250 Weatherford Road. Thank you for some of your clarity. I still am going to read my short statement. There might be a few redundant points, but I also think it addresses some of the things you said, particularly about early childhood education. I'm speaking to you this evening as a resident parent of three young children and licensed teacher with a master's degree in early childhood education as well as special education. As you said, and we're greatly concerned about the uncertain future of our nursery school, we all need extensive research on how early childhood education is vital to long-term success. The other nursery schools in the community won't be able to absorb the children, and I'm very worried that the ones that do absorb them will have overcrowded classrooms. I have no doubt that if the class size increases, the education of the child as a whole will suffer. This decision will have a ripple effect across our entire community. Early childhood education is not a teacher standing in front of a classroom teaching babies. Early childhood educators foster children in all areas of development, growth, motor, fine motor, cognitive skills, self-help, social, emotional, art, music. Social, emotional development in particular sets up for long-term academic success. Early childhood teachers work on independence, perseverance, and conflict resolution, just to name a few. These are the skills that the children will rely on as they get older. Additionally, the early childhood teachers are quite often the first ones that identify a child that might be a service, speech, OT, physical therapy, and other special education services. It is well-known that the earlier these services are implemented, the higher chance of success due to the brain elasticity at that age. The brain has an exponential ability to grow early in life and the window narrows as the child gets older and older. If some children slip through the cracks and being identified due to larger classes or being shut out of local preschools, they have lost the opportunity to capitalize on the neural plasticity that makes early intervention so effective. I've seen this time after time as a special education teacher, as well as with my own son, who was identified by Cathedral Teacher, received OT speech in preschool and now is flourishing in kindergarten with no extra therapy. Parents even trained ones like I was had a hard time giving their child objectively sometimes, which these teachers are at first line of defense. I understand there was a license agreement that was signed July 25th, 2018. I understand this agreement was given to Cathedral Nursery School the day before the July board meeting. Cathedral signed this agreement without any changes because there was no way of knowing that if the wording was modified, how long it would be for the board to respond, particularly since the next meeting was scheduled for mid-September. This put Cathedral in a very difficult position, starting a new school year without the signed agreement and being able to register families for the following year. Additionally, while the rent is low, the school is determined to be the highest and best use of the land. They paid all the bills, have invested $500,000 in renovations in addition to the rent fees. The plan has changed for St. Paul's, work is taking longer, and we are just asking for help for this extra year. Thank you.
I just want to make sure... David, you are absolutely wrong.
Peter, can you shed some light on that?
Yes, I don't have specific dates in front of me, but I can tell you that for a significant period of time prior to the execution of the document, there were negotiations with counsel for the school. And presumably he was reporting to his client, as I was to Mayor Doni. And it was made clear that actually it was intentional for board at that time not to renew in eighteen. There were great concerns about the topics that have already been raised here. And with a willingness on the part of the school to sign onto the language that you now find in the license agreement that, please, we'll do it this last time, we'll never ask again, we're done, we know we have to find a new home, we promise not to ever come back and ask for any new extensions for what we're doing or anything like what we're doing. With that proffered suggestion, then yes, in your phrase, at the last minute, close quote, the agreement was adopted by the board. But it wasn't at the last minute thrust upon them, it was a negotiated item over weeks, actually probably four months before its execution that that came about. And it was really a willingness to read that last voice that enabled this board to say and justify one last extension.
Also, just again, no one on this board is against early childhood education. I mean, that was very well spoken of what an early childhood educator does. That's not the issue here. And in all the years, I think the boards here should be given credit that they took the legal risk, they took the risk of having other people complain or take action against boards for doing something that's supported by school that they weren't doing for anyone else for 17 years.
Just curiously too, like what, and I'm honestly asking because I don't know, what has the leadership of the school said about relocating? Was it ever discussed or communicated to you guys what, like what's going on? I'm asking because I honestly don't know.
Yes, it was communicated to us that as of June 2020, they could be meeting and that they needed a new location in which they've been tirelessly searching for. And I don't know details, I'm not, I'm just a parent, I'm not in the school. But from my understanding, if we do get the year extension, it is possible to continue without any disruption and they can work on a relocation.
But they wasn't...
I will tell you my concern, and I have to. First one is wherever the party is, I'm giving, I gave that party, or the village gave that party, extension for 15 years. That party that comes to us and that party says, please give us a two-year extension, and in order to get it, we will sign off and say, this is it, you will never come back again. So the first issue that I have is that if we were to somehow change this, how would any rational person not think that there's a much better odds that one year from now, we're all sitting here again? That's my first issue. The second issue, which is the more important issue to me, is safety. This is the reason why I mentioned this before. Nothing's happening with St. Paul's ever, about that 15 times on the internet. We explained to you tonight, we showed you tonight, that's changing. Fencing is going up, construction companies are going up. I don't want that going on. I'm not happy that they'll be there for that year while this work is being done, while they're sitting there cleaning up the building and everything else. I'm not happy with that. But I sure as heck don't want to have that situation go past the one-year timeframe. So my concern is the safety of the children and the parents who are there, which is why we as a board emphatically can't even say, please do something. So I have to be very frank here. And I realize, I understand the sentiment in this entire room, is that, you know what, guys, come on, just give them another year, what the heck?
We're going to have to move along, this time is up. Yes.
So Rich Droy, 197, Brook Road. Thank you for that clarifying information. I guess if I could try and zero in on one particular item, it sounds like the problem lies in the fact that they're on parkland. Is that correct?
One of the issues.
One of the issues.
Even if I took parkland totally out of it, you take parkland totally out of it and has nothing to do with the other parts.
Well, sure, if you just let me finish. But the contract sounds a little more broadly written, if that's fair, where they cannot seek to relocate on any village property. So I guess my question is, and I ask in all honesty because I don't know the answer, is there even, because the broadness may not matter depending on the answer to my question, is there any property that's village-owned, that's not parkland, that could potentially serve as a new home?
Cino.
But then if it go out, we could publish it.
Okay.
Yeah.
If it did, it would...
Okay, because I guess my only concern is the village acting as an impediment in any way to them possibly relocate. Because I understand what you're saying.
Absolutely not. That was just in the agreement, no one's opposed.
Nope.
Well, but it is worded such that they cannot relocate on any property.
No, no, that's not what it says. Village on...
Village owned, right, village owned.
Not village owned property.
Not parkland owned.
Right.
No, it's a village owned property.
Village owned property.
Right, so my question is, and forgive me if I'm not being specific enough, but is there any village-owned property that's not parkland that could serve as a potential...
Well, if you're asking is there rentable property, yeah, the casinos are rentable. Just looking at, I mean, if somebody there and...
I get it. Man just asked, are there other properties?
No, but the casino cannot be considered a rentable property. My only point, I mean, I like the idea, and it can get, everyone here is obviously...
Did you ask if there's another option somewhere else?
Well, it's more than a public option, right?
Not realistic.
So I like the idea to go out and try and find space, whether it's in the church or, you know, private rental. I think that's a great idea, I think they should be doing that. My only point is, to the extent that the village, the way the contract is worded, it was acting as any kind of impediment, if there was an option for them to rent a public property, nope, proper, nope. Okay, thank you.
Yes, the person in the back.
I'm Hannah Carrigan, we want to see now the street, the front of the building. Julia S. Motta, I just, I've heard everything you said. I've heard that we're all in agreement about early education. The point that I'm making, I'm looking around at these faces, and when all these agreements were made, these young people were probably in high school or college, probably not even met their future spouses, no idea about where they would end up, if they would ever have children. Now we have, as you said, and I agree, an energetic, motivated group of young people who are now educated as to what the problem is. And I'm asking for more time for them to take all this energy to understand this situation and put it in the proper place so we're not all just sitting heartbroken up here. Thank you.
Hi, everybody, how are you? My name is Melissa Haratunian, I live at Nine College Place, and I stand here as a proud Cathedral Nursery graduate, class of 1989. 1989, I still call it 2002. Now, we've all come to the realization from these many smiling faces in this room that we stand to support the school. We now have an active population ready to help the school. We ask, please give us the time, as a committee of active parents, active faculty, active residents, to make the next move for our kids. We're standing before you, we all want to help. Give us the time to help. Now, if you don't mind, I'd also like to read some remarks I have here. I took the time to write them, I'd like to share them, if that's okay. The values instilled at Cathedral are unlike any other. As I can attest to as a proud graduate of class of 1989, when Cathedral Nursery School was in the previous location, I remember standing at the top of the slide, listening to the dinging of the railroad with all of my friends and remembering, this was home. And now I'm proud to say that the Cathedral Nursery School in the cottage is my son's home, is all of these parents' and their children's homes. That when we drive past the cottages, each and every one of our children turn to us and say, hey, that's my school. Garden City prides itself on a sense of nationalism, and many of us have learned that through our education, through Logis School, Stewart School, the middle school and the high school. Cathedral Nursery School is helping us to instill that in these young minds, ages two, three, four. It's not only about learning how to share, it's about learning to be a good citizen, learning the values of government that we're all expressing today. We're teaching that to these kids. We're here supporting the school. Please give us the time to help the school. Thank you.
Obviously, you seem like someone that has a lot of energy.
I'm an educator.
Which I admire. My question is...
Yes.
This is not something that just came about this week. This is something that has been going on for years, where everyone knew that this was a temporary situation and where this was going to end. So my question is, what have all of these people done in sitting down with their, the people who run the school, to work with them to find another location? Because I'll give you, I'll just give you my opinion. If I was sitting here and if I was a parent and if I had my kids here and if I knew that the people who ran this school knew this was coming for 17 years, and for 17 years did not appropriately address this, I would be frustrated. So my question is, I hope that you will sit down with them, and when you do, ask them why in 17 years that they haven't found another location?
Yeah, just to tack on to what Bob's saying too, and maybe we can, we can bridge here a little bit. Like maybe if there was a lease in your hand, you said, you know, we're going to move over to, we're going to make something, a commercial avenue, but we need a little more time, we need another six months, or, but we are moving and here's where we're going and what we're doing. Maybe then, you know, in like a good faith way, you could go, all right, these guys need us and we can help. Right now, it just feels like kind of same old situation of, yeah, we haven't really done anything since the last time we talked, but, you know, keep extending the lease, even though we know it's illegal. And that's really, like you can say St. Paul, you can say cloud cover, bird formations, whatever you want to blame it on, okay? At the end of the day, this is illegal, an illegal lease situation. So, you know, if we had something that said, hey, this is a reality we're going to leave, maybe that, maybe certain members of the board might feel a little differently about it.
First of...
I'm not asking you to answer, it's obviously something for the leadership of the school to handle.
All we have to do is basically...
Well, actually, you're supposed to let somebody who hasn't talked smoke get first and then you...
No, I haven't already did something, Louis.
Oh, right.
Also, I think my son graduating with you, we are 2002. In that zone, in that zone, and I am also a graduate as a schoolist, so we're all proud of what our community is. But again, a lot of your questions and your passions don't come to this board. You know, they come to another location, and that's where I'm encouraging you to go so you can take some action. You know, what if another nursery school comes up and says, you know, we don't like this illegal situation that you got going on over here. You're renting well below market value, you got a great deal, which is allowing the school to have a different competitive edge than what the other 10 or so nursery schools in town have. So this is a village issue where we represent everybody on, let me finish, everybody in the village, I heard the energetic speech, so everybody, we represent everyone here. We have to do what's right, not only for just the four-year-olds, but the parents of the four-year-olds who pay more into taxes here. And we're not against education, I want to finish, we're not against education. Not against education, but you need to take your problems where it's likely to be addressed so that you can have a school for your children. Just repetitively treading the wheel in a situation that is not going well is not a good move.
All right, you're going to have to be quick to...
Yes, I just have a question pertaining to, I know we mentioned about the fencing going up and the anticipation of construction. How is that going to affect the other parts of St. Paul, inclusive of the rec office there, as well as the kids? Our kids are the ones who are on the wheel. And our kids are the ones who are going to ballet there.
That's why...
So I'm trying to understand the...
Are they affecting their safety?
Right.
I'd like to leave, that's okay with your Melissa in the room?
For a second.
All right, are you fin...
It's important to, while she's walking up, it's important to separate whatever happens to St. Paul with what's going on with the nursery, because they're two completely different issues. Yes, there are things happening, but the narrative on Facebook of like, I saw one guy write like, they need to start parking, like that's, this is not, this is not a real thing, this is made up. So let's just deal with what it is, which is, it's a lease that probably should have been renewed as many times as it has. And again, maybe we should start focusing all of this really constructive energy on finding another location and then maybe, so, again, because that's been, I think...
Yes. Hi, Emily, I live at 720 Brook Road. I appreciate all the feedback you guys have given to the mothers who have already spoken. Some things I didn't know, some things I already did. We keep coming back to the fact that we've renewed the lease so many times. I know that the school invested a lot of money in renovating the building to be retrofitted for two, three, four, five-year-olds. So I have to assume that you're... So, I have to assume that the original lease wasn't a one-year, two-year, or a five-year lease, correct? So what was the original term?
It was, one-year lease.
It was. So they put $500,000 into a building to be there for one, two, three years.
Okay, now, hold on a second. Okay, so, not, please don't take away from your time. So, I knew this was gonna come up, so let's leave this up. So what happened was, for the first, just so everyone understands, understand the facts, for the first 10 years, they paid us $12,000 a year. Okay, hold on. $12,000 a year, that's $1,000 a month. That's $250 a building per month. So if anyone here runs a business, and if I would only charge you $250 a month to run a business, I think you would line up down the street, okay, to take that building. So, when you sit there and when you say that for 10 years, they invested, and again, I've heard numbers, 300,000, 400,000, let's just say it's a half million dollars, okay? The bottom line is, for 10 years, they paid so far below market value of what the village should have charged them. Okay? So the bottom line is, for the first 10 years, it was a wash, both sides benefited. What then happened was, after 10 years, we came to them and said, look, let's move forward. And gradually, what they do is they did increase the rates. So I'm just giving you a little.
Yeah, no, please, thank you. Okay, so, so that's great, because I was a lawyer, not understanding that. I'm an engineer, I'm not a teacher, I'm not a lawyer, um, understanding, it didn't work for me. So, this is the first time I was hearing of the issue, that they weren't gonna renew after July 2020. So that is why I am here today. I can't say why I wasn't here last month or the month before that, this is the first I'm hearing of it. So I am asking you to extend the lease so that our students have a place to go, that they look.
Okay, but whose responsibility?
Listen, can I just finish my statement? I'm asking for your extension so that we, the families, can help the administrators, who may have not done their due diligence, and I, they may or may not have, but I'm asking for your extension so that we can help them, so that we are now, we now have the right to go and help them.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think I've been pretty clear, no one's closed the school.
Don't, right. And there are people that are opening, so it's, it's an enigma to me. There are nursery schools in other communities that are opening, maybe not in Garden City, but there are people who are opening schools. So it's an enigma to me to say that you've looked at 25 sites, and somehow, none of them are acceptable. In one of the letters we got at one time, this was mine, on my side for first term of the board, and when I was here last year in this argument, we received a letter that listed the sites, one of them was St. Catherine's. That's a school! And somehow, that wasn't acceptable. Well, but, again, competitive market value in running your business and your students, even public schools have to balance the balance sheet. So, that, that's my plea. I also have a statement from Ed Robb, who wishes he could have been here tonight, but isn't up in Albany, so I'm just gonna read that from him.
Dear Mayor and Board of Trustees, I would be remiss not to speak in my, in regard to my concerns for the potential closure, closure of Cathedral Nursery School. During my time serving the 19th Assembly District, I have been afforded the opportunity to visit and work with the school on a number of occasions. The smiling faces of the little learners are evidence of a positive nurturing and warm educational environment that Cathedral Nursery School provides. Children feel safe and cared for, which builds their self-esteem and allows them to reach their potential both socially and academically. Cathedral Nursery School has been a central part of the Garden City community, providing quality education for over 51 years. Residents that attended the school have begun to send their second generation to Cathedral, knowing that they are leaving their children in capable hands. Recently, I partnered with the school to provide car seat safety checks to the families of the 19th Assembly District. It was with the support of the school and its staff members that over 25 cars were properly installed to ensure the safety of our most precious passengers. The child's experiences during the formative preschool years of life set the foundation for their future education. Cathedral Nursery School has put children on a path for academic success as they transition to kindergarten and onward. It is because of this that I am showing my support and allow Cathedral Nursery School to continue with the work they do at the place families in Garden City have come to know is the second home for their children. I implore you to consider permitting Cathedral Nursery School to extend their lease, as plans for the property of St. Paul's are still in development. I appreciate your time and attention to this matter, sincerely, Ed Robb. So, one more thing, was that I wanted to ask. As far as St. Paul's work and stabilization of the building, I totally agree that the air quality may be of a concern. There are a lot of homes that are right there as well, so how, how are we addressing the air quality, not just at St. Paul, it's just not at Cathedral, but it's also homes near St. Paul's Crescent, and.
Yeah.
Part of the abatement, right?
This building is not closing the Cathedral Nursery.
I agree.
Okay?
And, and we're certainly not closing it to work on St. Paul. If you're asking about the air quality, when they do abatement, they cut, they seal, it's not unlike what we did with Alice Hall, they seal it all up, and then the demolition is much more controlled, they don't just like. So, yeah, of course, we wanna, I don't move very far away from there either. No one, no one wants any sort of toxic, you know, air, so it's part of the plan when they do the abatement, they, they also come to us and show us how they kind of follow around.
Okay, I just think that not just, you know, you talk about the next year, and that work is ultimately, it sounds like it's coming to begin, while our kids are still there for the 19, 20 year, so we're not just talking about those future years, this is part of the concern too, for the air quality.
Can I ask a quick question? Like, what is, you guys wake up tomorrow, everything's perfect, is it that you're still in the, in the cottages, or is it that you found a perfect place for the school? This is what I mean, so, why aren't we talking about that?
I feel like just, we just got targeted. Like, it's a renovation.
And I, I see, which is the bottom of my heart, the first call you make tomorrow morning, after they now know the facts, and you know exactly what we're telling you, we're not making this up, so I hope the very first call you make tomorrow is to the administration of that school and say, why are we in this situation?
Of course, if there's anyone here from the school.
I mean, because that's what's so frustrating to us.
You're not allowed. So I, because that was the next step, is that we have to have a meeting with the administration of the board. Can I ask a question? How many of you, again, with the notion of the school coming to us for a two-year cycle, so it's a three-year-old program and then a four-year-old program, right?
I don't think so. It's a two-year-old program, a nursery program, and a pre-teen program.
Okay, so, alright, so how many of you are the parents of two and three-year-olds? How many of you were told there was an unstable situation with the school? When you registered? So they answered them? So you still, you registered your child, knowing that the school could, knowing that the school was looking for additional locations, and that they had to have a satisfactory location because safety, education, a two-year-old program, they can't go anywhere.
I'm sorry, you were aware, I'm sorry, I'm confused. So, you guys were all aware of this lately? So, where did you register?
So, when you, when the children started their education in 2018?
Yeah, I mean.
Well, that's our point, so when you sat here, so you registered in 2018, you were aware of it in 2018? And why didn't, why didn't you guys do something?
That's unfortunate.
Just a second, yeah, I, I mean, yeah, literally, and we might, we'll talk about this all night. I think it's important to say, I, you know, we should, we should, I think we should come to a place, at least tonight, to say, the board is not in your way here, tell us how we can help, tell us how we can help you to, no, excuse me, hold on, just let me finish, Jesus Christ. Okay.
Wow, that was so important.
What we, what I think everybody in the room would like, and we just clarified it a little bit, you know, the perfect world is you guys find an appropriate spot for the school, right? Tell us how we can help you do that. Doing that doesn't mean let us stay there forever, but I still think if you had something in your hand that said, here's where we're going and we need a little time, it might change people's opinion up here. It might not change colleagues, it might change mine. There's many different entities on the board. No one wants to throw anyone out of the school, let me be clear, but without a plan, and just like a whole bunch of, you know, nothing, then if we got nothing, we're like.
I mean, I suggest, if you have Ed Robb behind you, he has resources to help you relocate as well.
Until, I would be great if we got those speed cameras on, Bob.
Then so, and if you want to have a skin in the name, welcome to me.
Alright, everyone, excuse me, let's have the next speaker.
I think some of the difficulty, at least for us, we're coming to you for a garden teacher, the, the school administrators are not of the right system or a certain, as it's real.
Can I allow to talk to you?
We're, I think we're very present.
Well, hold on a second. Then I probably can't read, because, is anybody else reading the Facebook posts? Because there are many people who are posted, who you can clearly determine weren't there.
No.
Okay?
Alright, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Can we move on? Where is the next speaker? Is there someone else here that'd like to come forward?
I actually, I had asked, I had 205 Wellington, my whole prepared statement that I'm not gonna read from, I have about 16 statements from parents and other residents in town who support the school. And I get that you guys, it seems like you're obviously not, not supporting the school, you understand the benefits. Um, I guess I come to you as trustees of our village, is it your job to do whatever you can to benefit the residents of the village? And I don't see how anyone can dispute that the school benefits of our residents, and especially our youngest residents.
Believe it or not, though, just to be fair, we are supposed to represent everyone in the village, not just everyone who turned up.
Of course.
And when we rent a private enterprise on public property, we do get a lot of flak.
Totally.
I know it seems like nothing, but we guys aren't here every week, so we can get pretty lonely in here, and a little raw, and, um.
It's not the problem.
Um, but, you know, the, the issue is that, you know, we, we need to come to a place where we can help this, like, I, I, like I said, everybody here has the best intentions for you guys, but it has to be, you know, be in such a way that we can help.
I don't, I understand that.
The whole point of us extending this to two years was to, is to help.
I understand that. Look, this is kind of the first appearance we're getting involved in, okay? I don't know what the administrators have done to find a new location, but I'm pretty sure at this point, they've gotten the message that they need to. I, I don't think anyone's doubting it.
So you have one more year to do it.
No, but we have to register in November, so.
The school is in operation, the lease sets in 2020, you have one more year to do it. This is doable in a year.
So. Say, I was like, I must have said it 10 times, maybe if you had a plan, and you came back with that, we would feel a little bit differently about it. Wait, wait, nudge, nudge. We understand this is illegal, however, if they came on review with a lease and I said, we're going to 124 Main Street, we just need another six months, we need another eight months, I think everyone on the board would too, would be hesitant, at least I would.
And hopefully, hopefully after this meeting, we, that'll work better, and that can happen, but you guys also keep asking what you can do to help us, and I'm just trying to understand why there isn't something the village can do. I mean, I, I wanna, I, for an example, when every business is faced with a difficult situation, should we save Leo, should we save every other school? You are a business. Other schools are, are.
You are a business, this nursery school that has not been able to maintain here.
I know. I'm wondering, I'm wondering, have you ever thought of contacting Adelphi University and Australia or Los Angeles?
You know, to be fair to them, they're just parents, like, they're not students, not teachers.
They have elementary education programs.
I guess I'm just wondering why the village can't work this school, see if there is another village location, I could, sorry, didn't, uh, we.
We don't have a location, I know. We don't have a location for you.
I mean, it's, it's.
I, I actually, to be fair, the board trustees would like nothing more than to have you remain in the village, but it can, it's just not a legal status, and we can't do that, because we take it over, and we get on to the job, okay? But I really think that there are a lot of people we should go to, the people who have that is their gift, and are good at it, that could help you.
I mean, I agree with all that, I guess I'm trying to also understand why, maybe I'm wrong about this example, but, did, wasn't the Garden City Nursery School sold a piece of land by the town, and the mortgage was forgiven? Like, how is that justifiable if, if helping?
I have not heard that.
That's how it's justifiable, if we're asking for it. So, this is, look, obviously, we're all hearing these things from each other, and I don't know the source of this, but it's my understanding that in 1956, the Garden City Nursery School requested property from the village to build a new location, the village sold them the land, held the mortgage for some time, and then forgave the mortgage. I mean, even back then, it was understood how important our child education was.
Tell us what the license is.
Yes, come forward, please.
Yeah, but. Sure, but they're doing it right, and they're gonna be doing it next year.
Hi, um, my name is Amanda Leggett, 307500 Road, I am actually on the board, and I read the agreement in my part where I, I read it clearly, and then I asked an attorney who's very close to me. For the cathedral, yeah, so, you know, I was under the impression that I was not allowed to give out details of, you know, what has been going on. Um, and I shouldn't word it like that, I wasn't allowed to give out details. It was recommended that I didn't, you know, speak of what was happening with, you know, going back, what.
My, my boy?
No, 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 I'm talking about the license agreement that I read. That was my.
They told you that you couldn't speak, man.
I, from the license agreement that I read, it says that.
Yes, it does, yes, it does.
So are you speaking now? No, what I'm asking, I'm asking you a question. It's me. Is the next, just a little further than this? The next meeting is July 18, correct? Yes. Yes. Would it be fair to say that if there was a grand old plan in place, there would be new considerations? By one trustee, yes?
Sure, I don't know why.
Just if, if there's, you know.
I don't know why any interesting person on this board would turn their back on, on some sort of.
And, I mean, I guess I'm just speaking, you know, and I don't want to speak for everybody, I'm speaking for myself here. I, you know, knowing that it was a year-to-year lease agreement, I knew that from the very beginning, but I also knew, like, okay, this has been going on for, you know, 15 years now, who, you know, who knows how long? And shame on me for assuming that, that was an assumption. So now I feel like we all know what's going on, what's happening, we're all ready to do something about it, and we just want the chance. That's all.
Yes, come forward, please.
Paul Dorton, 53 Jackson Street, um, would you be able to say that I would be very disheartened to see a building sitting in that position? I said I would be very disheartened to see a building sitting in that position. I'd rather see it gone, but we can't see it, uh, just not, that's all.
Anybody else who registered, come forward, please, podium, yes.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I'm not registered, I'll be after the nursery school.
Better be good.
But I have a question, or several questions, regarding St. Paul's. Now, you're putting up a fence for construction, are you going ahead with the plan that was presented to the people that they do not want and have regarded to be?
Nope, this is nothing to do with it. This is actually.
I haven't finished the question.
True, okay. Ask the question.
It has been referred to as Madison Square Garden East, because of how ridiculous the whole plan is. This building has been neglected for 25 years. We bought it with faith, they. We bought it with faith, thinking that they were going to do something constructive as far as administration, the police department, the fire department, and meeting rooms. None of that was done, now that it's fallen down, you want to preserve it, it's too late. There are surveys that have gone around, and we like this, that are you willing to pay for it? I've lived in this town since 1971. My taxes have risen up through the roof. You want to build something and taxes, taxes for it that we don't even want. When we asked about a referendum being brought before the people, we were told, we don't have to do that. And we're not going to. This is not. We would know that meaning in, um, St. Paul, that there would not be a referendum.
No, the, the question was, yeah, let's rewind a pinch, you're done speaking, are you?
I'll listen to what you have to say.
Okay, okay. Um, so a few things, we're not proceeding with the proposed concept. What we are proceeding with is basically stabilization and abatement, which, to your point, has not happened for 25 years and is in desperate need of. We will always, will always disagree with the fact that, I do not believe that building should be demolished. You may feel another way, but that's what makes this world great, that you can have an alternate opinion to me. I believe that's one of the architectural treasures, not even just in this town, but in this state, maybe even in this, this part of the country. Um, and I will do everything in my power to keep it standing and give it a productive use. So right now, we're erecting a fence, um, to proceed with the stabilization and the abatement, not the concept. That's down the road a piece. Um, and to your comments about the, the surveys that went around and things like that, people just talked about what they wanted in the building. Something's more, even more expensive than what we talked about.
Never was done, we should put on any of those surveys.
Right, every single one, I, I think came up that they wanted an indoor pool as well. So like, you know, there's a lot of different opinions in town. We will work to get the best program to address as many of those as we can. But I will never be part of anything that lets that building fall over or get forcibly not built. So we'll always disagree about that.
So even if the building is not considered to be, uh, in any condition where it can be kept.
It is in condition to be kept, we've had several surveys.
Then why are bricks falling off of it?
Well, it's all, I mean, you know, things fall off me and my wife keeps me around.
Let me see, let me see, I'll try to address this. Okay, that's important. Um, I understand you're very passionate about this. I know it's the same polls, there's a lot of people who are on different sides of the fence. You basically sit here and say, you know what, nothing's been done for 26 years, it's time to pass, tear the building down. That's one of your points. I've listened to many people in the village that are always passionate, the opposite of you. Where they sit there and they say, there's actually no reason to tear down, let me speak, to tear down this treasure. So the bottom line is, what are we doing now? What we're doing is, as Dr. Newo mentioned, stabilization and abatement. Abatement means, as I've said before, you have to deal with whatever the building, even if you're right, we tear down the building tomorrow. Before we do that, we have to deal with what's inside the building, whether you like that or not. So what we're doing right now, if we end up there, that's where we're gonna end up. The second thing is, is that as trustees, we have to give the residents, okay, in my opinion, and I've said this from day one, we have to give residents the choice. And the bottom line is, the only way that you can give residents a choice is you have to stabilize what you currently have. So that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna stabilize, we're going to abate it, and then at that point, we move forward. Now again, you may not, you may think it's a waste of time, you may think it's a waste of money, but it's total disrespect to all the thousands of people who don't want to tear it down, for us just to turn around and do it. And again, regardless, even if we did, we still have to do the abatement. So that's what we're doing right now. So any rumors that this is, you know, going through with the big master plan is not true.
Can I say something?
So, right.
Many of the thousands of people that wanted the building kept have changed their minds at this point because of them dragging their feet for so long on doing something. Many people have changed their opinion of what should be done with the building.
To be fair, there, no one on this board dragged their feet about anything, I think if anything, this board here is.
Well, this board wasn't there, uh, 26 years ago and they bought it.
The, the issue is, we're, we're trying desperately to do something.
Dealing with it now, we're dealing with it now, I can't go back 26 years and say what, what should have been done, we're dealing with it now.
Will the people of the village get the opportunity to vote on the project when it comes up to fruition?
That's a, that's a decision that this board has to make, I have supported that from, from square one, but that's a decision that this board has to make.
And even more than that, to, to go upstream a little bit, because that's, that's a little bit further down the line. We still have to really get together as a community and figure out a program that we are gonna put in the building. What you saw in last July, what you saw subsequent to that, was a sketch, it was an idea of what's possible. No one said there's gonna really be an ice cream, no one really said that there's gonna be, you know, this or that. Well, you might find it ridiculous, again, but in a lot of those surveys, a lot crazier amenities came out that people are a favorite for. So, and a lot more expensive than an ice cream. So again, I think we need to sit down, a lot of people really want STEM. A, a lot of people want performance and music spaces, we don't have that in town. Um, so once we come together, figure out what the program is, we can sign a real cost of things. And then we can do, talk about how we're gonna finance it, how we get it passed, how it goes on and moves to the next level. But bottom point, at this point, the, the thing that's most pressing is to seal up the roof and make sure we stop all that water damage, stabilize the structure.
What happens if you find out that this building is not going to exist?
Right, I'm sorry, and thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who would like to come forward? Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Okay, can I have a question to adjourn?